But today, we will receive an overview from Mr. Rojero. Take it away, Mr. Rojero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Council. Dennis Rojero, Chief, pardon me, Financial Officer. I appreciate you having us here to brief you. This is the culmination of a great deal of effort on your part, on our part, and on the part of the public. If I can have the presentation, please. And you see the agenda there. We'll begin with the fiscal year 23 recommended budget. Moving on to our continuing success in the grant research and competitive grant program. We've got a good story to tell you there. Continuing with the good story, we've got the capital improvement program and closely linked to that, our debt program for the upcoming fiscal year. So let's dive right in. And here it is, Council. 1.9 billion, I'm rounding, but 1.9 billion dollars for fiscal year 23, an increase of just under 4% from the current year budget. I'm going to share with you some highlights that are associated with those increases. You've got additional staffing. We've heard Council say on many occasions that we need to staff up, and you'll see that reflected in this budget, including the Housing Department, transportation, water, parking enforcement, and planning and permitting. Couple of other items contributing to this increase from the previous fiscal year, the additional community redevelopment area contributions, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Additional police, fire, and rescue equipment, higher fuel costs, of course, that should be no surprise, additional funding for vehicles. As we'll get into in just a minute, we continue to concentrate on catching up on our new vehicles and vehicle replacements. We've got a lot of needs out there. Continued funding of the wastewater and water projects, expansion of our solid waste capital improvement program, we'll talk more about that, increased funding for parks and recreation, and of course, the recently negotiated labor contracts. You see here the breakout of the major funds. We're going to concentrate on the general fund and the enterprise funds. You see those up there? They make up three quarters of the budget, where most of our services are provided to the public, and especially in our public safety realm, most of the general fund. And here are those two categories. On the left, the general fund, again, home of the Tampa Fire and Rescue Department, the Police Department, our Parks and Recreation Department, the Convention Center, Neighborhood and Community Affairs, and other government support operations. On the right, the enterprise funds. You're familiar with those. Those are departments that run like a business. In the private sector, they would be compelled to make a profit or go out of business, so they charge for the services directly that they provide. As we've discussed before, the money they charge can only be spent on their services. Again, they run like a business, water, wastewater, and solid waste primarily. And we've seen this slide before. We put this up here to note two important drivers of our property tax revenue. Property tax is our single largest revenue, and although it only, I say only, only accounts for about one-sixth of the total budget, it's a big contributor to our general fund. Again, the general fund is the funding we have the most flexibility with what we spend. And you see on the right, we display the impact of the contributions required to the community redevelopment agencies, the CRAs, over $40 million. And on the left, again, we reiterate that property taxes by themselves simply aren't enough to pay for our public safety services. I don't think they've been enough in my memory, and I don't anticipate they'll ever be enough to pay for our public safety services. Breaking down the general fund into a little bit more detail, I'll highlight some of the top increases. Of course, pay increases at the top. You've heard the mayor, you've heard the Chief of Staff discuss the recruitment, retention, and reward of our valuable employees, and that'll be the cost in fiscal year 23 in the general fund. We have various operating increases that we can get into detail and are detailed in the budget document, the CRA contributions that we just mentioned, again, a significant amount of funding. And once again, you've heard the mayor say, general funding for housing assistance. We started out the year with $4 million from the general fund. We're cranking that up to $5.5 million, about a third percent increase. But as you also heard the mayor say, that's not the only funding going to housing. We've got over $20 million in new revenue total for fiscal year 23. I also want to mention, we've got the $400,000 set aside for the Council's request on tenant advocacy. And Ms. Travis will be up later to discuss in a more detail the broad-based encompassing resources that we're putting and that we have put towards the housing crisis. Council, you have asked specifically about the pay increases for next year. Of course, you're aware of the collective bargaining agreements of 9.5%. You see also here that for the professionals and the unclassifies and the supervisors, we're mimicking that rate, nine and a half percent. Moving on to the managers, we have a 6% increase planned for them. You see that the directors and the administrators are still pending, and elected officials, including city council, is 3%. And I'm going to turn it over to the Chief of Staff to get into a little more detail about what we plan in fiscal year 23 for council salaries.
Good morning, Council. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. During the planning cycle, which really launched in FY '22 for FY '23, there'd been some public comment, robust public comment, and some non-motion asked from certain council to take a look at council salary as we move into FY '23. And I want to thank some of the fan group for some of their analysis and public engagement towards city staff, and I want to thank Ian Whitney and Marley Wilks for their work in intergovernmental analyses. And we brought forth a recommendation to increase council's current salary as part of the FY '23 budget recommendation to what would be considered the median salary for this type of work based on other comparators in central Florida. And that would bring the salary, which is currently $52,060, up to a recommended $73,713, which is analytically on par with your peers on similar governments, including the City of St. Pete and the City of Orlando. So that is an increase recommended in the budget. It's not on a slide. We can talk about it further, but that's what staff through additional support and analysis is recommending to change council's base salary as of FY '23.
Thank you, Chief. If I can have the present-- and there it is. Continuing on with the general fund, again, a subject very near and dear to our heart, the general fund balance. We're going to zero in on that, and I really can't stress enough how important this metric is. And once again, I want to thank council's continuing support of this fund balance, these fund balance levels. As you can see, going left to right, the amount in the fund balance continues to increase, and that's typical because it's a ratio to the budget. As the budget increases, the amount will also increase. But if you look at the top of those bars, you'll see that the percentage is reverting back to pre-pandemic levels, 23%, 24%. This is what we would expect, and this is what we anticipate as we spend down the federal stimulus that contributed to those high levels in the past couple of years. We're still, as you know, well above our 20% policy. Our policy, our 20% policy is certainly not a goal, and it's not a limit. We continue to try to exceed that. That contributes to our stability and resiliency. So I guess the takeaway from here is this return to a consistent and pre-pandemic level, very, very stable. It's a very, very stable picture. This is a wonderful slide reflecting the strength of our general fund. Our citywide position summary, again, council's indicated to us that you'd like increased staffing. You see it here. We're adding a total of 70 positions citywide. You see them here grouped by strategic goal in the budget book. You'll see them grouped by department, but they include housing, permitting, as I mentioned, transportation, water, a significant influx in resources for the ever-expanding services that the city continues to provide. At the top, you'll see that we're still well below what we were following the Great Recession, over 150 positions less than that. And that'll be a nice segue into this chart here. You see, notwithstanding the position increases I just mentioned, we continue to reduce our ratio of employees to the population. You may recall that in the current year, we were tied with St. Petersburg for lowest. We remain tied with them, but that line going from left to right, you see that, is a gradual and planned decline of, I guess, what we would call right-sizing our staff. At the same time, you've had increases in population, you've had increases in service demands, and yet, that line continues to go down. Some of that, doing more with less, you've heard it before, I'm sure you'll hear it again, but also technological advances, okay? As we bring in more technology and we're getting very, very technologically advanced, we can reduce or reallocate personnel resources to other functions because, of course, as you know, the needs don't stop and they don't shrink. But again, a very nice picture from a, from a stable and conservative financial management perspective, and that's really what we've become known for. Citywide health insurance costs, we love showing this slide. We continue to do much better than the national trend. We can be very proud of that. I want to give credit where credit's due. We continue to feel our wellness centers are just hitting the ball right out of the park, especially during the pandemic with COVID testing, COVID vaccinations, and our broad-based wellness program that endeavors to include family, not just employees, but their spouses, their partners, their children. And you're seeing it pay off now. I don't know that you'll ever see healthcare costs decrease, but we're certainly doing a very, very good job of mitigating that rate of increase, especially when you compare it to the nationwide trend. And vehicles, you heard me mention vehicles earlier. We continue to laser focus on new and replacement vehicles. As many of you are aware, following the Great Recession, we had to make priorities, and in many instances, prioritization did not include buying the vehicles that we needed to keep running as efficiently as we can. We're again throwing another $33 million, a little more, a little less than we did in the current year for vehicles, and about a third of that is going to police and fire. Want to say a few words about our grant research and competitive grant program. We continue to reap the benefits, as you've heard me say in the past, of a more proactive and coordinated approach. We've realigned some resources in the back offices, so we're all singing from one page, whether it's the Revenue and Finance Department, whether it's the Water Department, the Housing Department, so we can better focus and leverage our resources to get what we affectionately call other people's money. And you see here, we continue to be very ambitious. We'll be aiming for nearly $140 million of competitive grants next year, and these are the competitive grants, not the entitlement grants. They're not just, they're not just giving these away. So we don't anticipate we're going to get them all, but we're going to give it the old college try. And again, the more ambitious we get and the wider net that we cast, the more opportunities we create for ourselves, either to bolster existing services, or if we find an opportunity for something we want to do but haven't had the resources to do, we can find them as part of this process. And you see our progress this year, nearly 70 million applied for already. We've still got about two months left in the year, and over a quarter of those were awarded to us, about $20 million. Again, this is competition. We're competing with other localities. And a brief history, you can also see how since we ramped up this program in 2020, we are reaping the benefits. As I said, speaking of $70 million, that's how much we've been awarded in three, in less than three years. You see what we've got in the current year? We've still got about $25 million in requests pending. So I want to thank my team. I want to thank the partnership we have with the other departments and in some instances, nonprofits in gaining this funding. I don't need to say it, but I'll say it. If we didn't have this funding, we either wouldn't be doing it, or we'd be taking it from elsewhere. This is a very big win, and I think it'll continue to be a very big win. Moving on now to our five-year capital improvement program, again, a very significant component of what you all will review. And here it is, $1.9 billion, nearly $2 billion of recommended projects over the next five years. Very consistent with the current plan. I think I've shared with you before, we've got an aggressive capital improvement program going on. Of course, the poster child is the Pipes Program, but it's far more to it than that. Significant increases in the community redevelopment agencies, parks and recreation, the solid waste department, stormwater, and then again, can't help, I mean, you see the biggest items on there, water and wastewater associated with the Pipes Program. Getting into a few more details on these projects, I'm going to highlight the major projects. This is not limited to just the projects, and then we'll get into a little bit of detail for the differing council districts. And you see it here, water treatment plant improvements, wastewater improvements, wastewater collection, pumping station, again, all part of that Pipes Program. We've had two debt issuances. You'll hear me talk about a third potential debt issuance next year, and if it doesn't happen next year, it'll happen in the year after. We're doing a very good job, as you've heard us say, of acquiring the funding and then spending the funding. You heard the mayor discuss it. So the good news is, we're bringing in a lot of money, and we're spending a lot of money for exactly what we planned. Moving to parks and recreation, at the top of the list, the East Tampa Recreational Complex, Gandy Park South and Palonas Park improvements, Sulfur Springs area improvements, Wayne Pappy Athletic Center, New Tampa Sports Complex, we've got the Veterans Memorial at Jim Walter, excuse me, and Hyde Park. So a lot of stuff, a lot of things going on in the Parks and Recreation Department in this plan. Solid waste and environmental program management, only two bullets, but a great deal of funding, and I'll get into a little more detail on that in just a moment as we discuss some of the potential debt issuances we're looking at. Headquarters fleet relocation from the Spruce, from the Spruce area, and the McKay Bay, excuse me, Waste-to-energy Facility Program. Mobility, the multimodal network that's associated with the Build Grant, the West River Program, the Rome Avenue Program, stormwater projects, street resurfacing, significant amount of funding for mobility. And the Facilities Management Division, the Public Safety Training Facility. As you know, that's decades and decades old. We're the 49th largest city in the U.S. with one of, if not the best, fire and police departments. We need to improve their training facilities. And along with that, the relocation of the impound facility for TPD and fleet maintenance decentralization. We have a centralized fleet program now. We think we can gain a lot of efficiencies and reduce a lot of maintenance times by decentralizing that, by focusing more on the particular service being provided at the location and reducing the amount of time it gets for our assets to get to where they need to be repaired. And into the district maps, you'll find these interactive maps in the Open Gov program online, and there's a link at the end of this presentation. And in District 4, you'll see, and you're going to see this in each district council, the comprehensive infrastructure for Tampa's neighborhoods. That is quite simply the water, wastewater, mobility, and stormwater departments working together throughout the neighborhood to, almost a strike force for capital projects, to get into an area from the bottom up, try to mitigate any inconvenience to the neighborhood occurring with all of this activity. In the past, as you probably know, we haven't been quite as well-coordinated, so a department would come in, tear something up, fix it, and then low and behold, maybe not too long after, another department would come in and tear up the exact spot. We've gotten a lot smarter about it, and I think, I think you've heard very positive things about this template. I know our departments have, so you'll see that throughout the districts. Extensive stormwater and street flooding work, again, the Build Grant and West River Walk, and parks improvements. Again, these are not the only projects, these are simply the highlights. Moving on to District 5, at the top of the list, again, the East Tampa Recreational Complex, again, that comprehensive infrastructure program, again, the Build Grant and the West River Walk Program, Public Safety, the Hannah Avenue Government Center, we continue with that at pace, and as I mentioned previously, the Sulfur Springs area improvements. In District 6, again, the Neighborhood Infrastructure Projects, again, the Build Grant and the West River Walk and Rome Avenue Project. And of course, the Howard Avenue, I can't see, oh, the Howard Avenue Police Department Offices and Wayne C. Pappy Improvements. And moving into District 7, once again, the Neighborhood Infrastructure Projects, Fire Station Number 24, the Fire Station Number 20 Parking Lot, and the New Tampa Area Renovations. Like to segue a short distance to the debt program because this is the mechanism that we have used in the past, and this is the mechanism, one of the primary mechanisms we'll continue to use in the future to fund many of these projects. There we are. And you saw this, you've seen this before, you saw this in the mayor's presentation, but rightly so, I think it's worth reiterating. We don't just put this up here to brag on what we're doing, but it is bragable. We show this because it goes hand in hand with what those big projects you just saw are going to be accomplished with. We're doing big, important projects, and it takes big money. But we also show this because the better these ratings are, as you heard the mayor said, the more money we save that we can allocate to more projects. It really is a very positive circle there. The better we can make these, the more money we save, and the more projects that we can do. All of them, as I've said before, are high-grade or better, and you and the community should expect nothing less. At the top, you see the rating called the Issuer Credit Rating. The closest metaphor for that is probably your personal FICO score. That's how well the City of Tampa is doing, and we're doing very well. On the far right, you see Standard and Poor, AAA, that is the highest rating you can get. The other two rating agencies, Moody's and Fitch, have given us the second highest rating. That is a very, very good FICO score. And as I said before, it continues to be worth reminding everybody that this is a very good gauge also of our financial stability. It's frequently reviewed and scrutinized by the credit rating agencies, Moody's, Fitch, Standard and Poor's. They come in with a fine-tooth comb, and they go through reams of documents, and they talk to just about everybody in the Revenue and Finance Department and many of the other departments. And what do they find with this fine-tooth comb? They find continuing improvement and financial stability, so much so that you see on screen there, 14 credit rating upgrades since 2011. And I want to make it clear, you know, they don't just set it and forget it. They come back. We have to continue to justify these rates and these ratings and prove that we deserve them, and we do. I'll end this slide by thanking council. I wouldn't say it if it wasn't true. We have taken some very big, bold steps from both a capital improvement program and a debt program perspective, and I think it's paying off. It's paying off real life every day for everyone in the city, not just residents. So thank you. Going to give you a picture of our current outstanding debt service, 35 years out to 2057. Again, very well-planned. We have some experts in-house, and we hire some experts outside to make sure this is a very well-run and stable plan. The green line shows the outstanding debt for the water and wastewater departments. You'll see that labeled as enterprise. Right now, those are the only enterprise funds we have debt with. The blue line shows the debt associated with governmental. That'll be our community investment taxes, our CIT, which I'll speak to in just a moment. Stormwater, the Florida Aquarium, our Convention Center, mobility and facilities improvements. That debt line, that blue debt line will be adjusted for the anticipated debt issuance that will include the East Tampa Recreation Center, and I'll get into a little more detail in just a moment on that. But this is a very good debt profile. You've heard me say it before, nice, smooth, decreasing over time, indicating very clearly that we have additional debt capacity for additional projects, for things that may arise that, you know, they're not such a big priority now, but who knows what the future will bring. So that's a very good debt slide right there. This is our debt service payments every year. Again, last debt service payment in 2057, nice, smooth. We do this deliberately. There's no surprises for any subsequent city councils, for any subsequent mayors. You see that gradual decrease with plenty of capacity to do more as the needs arise. So you've looked at where we are now. I want to give you some insight into what we're planning for the future and the future debt issuances. This is the general government debt issuance I referenced earlier. We anticipate at this time, it'll be about $90 to $120 million, and you see the projects that will be included. East Tampa Recreational Complex, Fire Station Number 24, Public Safety Training Facilities. I won't read the entire slide, but we'll be bringing this to you in the very near future and a reimbursement resolution. You've seen these reimbursement resolutions before, and we'll brief you on them before we bring them to you, but what you can anticipate is a document that says, we're going to expedite these projects. We're not going to wait for the debt issuance, but when we start spending money for these projects, when we get that bond, when we get that commercial paper, whatever it is, we're going to pay ourselves back. We do this so we can move faster, so we don't have to wait for all of the logistics and detail associated with a major debt issuance. We'll explain more, but you've seen it before. Again, this allows us to get out of the starting gate much faster. It's a reimbursement resolution. You'll hear it again. You'll hear it again in this presentation because we have a few. Moving on to the Pipes Program, again, a very significant debt issuance, the third one for the Pipes Program, upwards of $300 million. Again, we're moving very, very fast, and that's good, but we don't want to move so fast that we don't have the necessary funding in place, but we also don't want to bring in a bunch of funding that we can't spend. What you don't want to do is hold on to a great deal of debt service with those interest charges while you're not getting things done. We're speedy, but depending on how fast we continue to move, it will be a next year or fiscal year '24 debt issuance. But again, all planned, all part of the overall 20-year, nearly $3 billion program, and this will be a little over $300 million. Again, we'll telegraph these and brief you ahead of time, but I do want to give you some insight. And the solid waste debt issuance, we have a great deal to do in the solid waste department, not the least of which is relocating that section from Spruce Street. We've talked about that before. It's going to be expensive. You've got the Waste-to-energy Plant is going to be an expensive proposition. You see 200 to 200, excuse me, $220 million. Again, we'll telegraph it, we'll brief you. It is our intent, again, to do a reimbursement resolution so we can hit the ground running and get the beginnings of these projects going. We have discussed a rate study associated with the solid waste needs. We'll discuss that more in the future. That's a hefty lift, but a needed lift. And the stormwater debt issuance, a great deal of work needed there also. Continuing that Neighborhood Infrastructure Project I discussed earlier, you are aware of some of these already, Lamb Canal, Gulfview Estates, flooding in the lower of some of these already, Lamb Canal, Golf View Estates, flooding in the lower peninsula southeast region. Again, a reimbursement resolution we'll bring to you, we'll brief you. Big projects, big plans, it's going to take big money. And the budget calendar, as you heard earlier, we've got a budget workshop later on this month, looking forward to that. Please don't wait until the budget workshop to ask any questions you have. Hopefully, it goes without saying, I'm always available, my team is always available. Please reach out. It is a one point nine billion-dollar budget. It is by necessity complex and expansive, okay? We're here to help guide you through that, so please reach out. And then, of course, we'll be there at the budget workshop. You see the two public hearings are scheduled, looking forward to those also. And there is the link I referenced earlier, we can also send it to you, where you have the budget, you have those interactive maps, you have the detail. Before I open it up to questions, if I may though, as we're all aware, it's a very challenging environment. We've got global challenges, we've got national challenges, we've got local challenges. We're experiencing the highest inflation in forty years. We may be in a recession as we speak. I don't need to belabor the affordable housing issues. As we've said before, the community investment tax is going away, the all-for-transportation tax, we'll see, we'll cross our fingers and hope for the best. But as you heard the mayor say, as you've heard me say before, and I anticipate you'll hear me say again, despite all of these headwinds, we've got a very, very sound financial plan. The city is in good shape, due in part to this planning on debt service, due in part to these rating agencies, due in part to the strong general fund balance, to the management of the various departments and programs by leadership and their teams, by city council, by the mayor. So we've got a carefully crafted and finely balanced budget we're submitting to you. And I don't just mean balanced in revenues and expenditures, we have to do that by law. If we don't do that, someone else will be presenting the budget to you other than Dennis. But we've got it balanced here, we've got it balanced here, we've got it balanced here. It's finely tuned, the tolerances are tight, so changes in one area, I'll tell you ahead of time, are probably going to necessitate changes in another area. We think we've accounted for the priorities you've given us, that the mayor's given us, that we've heard from in the community. As you've heard the chief of staff say before, the four Ps, first and foremost, the public, our valued personnel, our partners, internal partners, external partners, and of course, our policymakers. We think we've accounted for all of that. But we're a major American city, there's a lot going on, and we have a lot of needs. As you know, we have a, we developed an Open Gov training class. Thank you to those of you who've attended. I hope you found it useful. Again, there's a lot going on. We're still here to guide you through, but if, after taking that class, or even if you haven't taken that class, jump in, look around, and we can answer any specific questions. I've said this already, contact me anytime. Like to thank you again. I wouldn't say it if it wasn't true. I genuinely appreciate your efforts, my team, the departments, the mayor, the chief of staff. It's been a great budget year so far, with a lot of needs, a lot of challenges, but I think we're in a very good spot. And from here on out, it's prioritization, discussion, and workshops. Thank you very much.